All right, folks, sorry, we had a meeting before the meeting, so. We'll call the meeting to order at 5:30, is that what it is? Glad allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. United Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did we get a chance to go through the minutes? Everyone? Three seconds? Well, it's gonna take you more than three seconds, because you got August 30th and February 6th. Through, K roll, manifest. Want to speak on this MS-1? For us, Allen? Need it?
Just that the MS-1 is a capture of the value of the entire town, and the value is used to set our tax rate. So hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll have a tax rate. Yes, let's do September 1.
Have a letter of iron swearing in for a little bit, office, a minute? Need a motion, health trust agreement? Oh, Ava? Going through new business, I didn't see anything in the.
Yes, we did receive the grant that Sean Mulcahy had applied for, for the town. When the fire chief comes in later, he'd like to speak about that.
Oh, okay. New business, tax rec. Their shoreline permit for, from DES? National items? It's like the Barnstead Budget Committee, when, first, oh, that's old, right? Oh, is it? Okay, at 6:00. Tomorrow at 6:00. miscellaneous items?
Do we have any update on the bandstand? You're welcome.
What do you have to do for? Know where we are with that? Oh, is that what we booked for? Sure. I thought we were already fundraised. We're gonna hit the end of October, we're gonna have to get going. Sure, I think a motion. Second?
Aye. Second?
Ava?
Aye.
All right, still have a full time. They posted already?
We have it posted on the website.
All right.
Lee, if we could perform the swearing-in first prior to the public hearing?
Chief's waiting on somebody.
Holding out.
Yeah.
Couple, not necessarily happy that we've moved into the school majority, so it was very, the staff, they're very, very close with changes, I'll put it that way. People, they come through, they mentioned that they're like 25, 26, 27 rounds too. I think in November, when there's been increasing on people that are, so that we still be in five.
Yeah, well, weather's got to be a little worse than it was. I got nothing but. Good.
As well.
A handicap. I really liked that. Walkers really, really short for, aligned for them. We had the, we had the wheelchairs, and we had the walkers. But yeah. I think they enjoyed it a lot. A lot of elderly still want to go. Standing out, just pack a lot.
No, I don't think so.
What am? Think we're ready?
Okay, you ready? Yep.
Good evening, and, Emmy?
I can hear you.
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. We've got a couple of special occasions going on. The first thing we're gonna talk about tonight is the staffing in the Barnstead Police Department. I'd like to first thank the Barnstead Board of Selectmen for working diligently with me and my staff in getting the department up to staff. It's been a long time coming, and we're very happy that we've been able to bring some certified officers onboard with us, and with some experience, and we're moving this department forward. So, the first officer we're gonna talk about tonight is also Chris Papalato, also known as Pops by his students, his former students. Chris Papalato is a 16-year veteran. He started his law enforcement career in Lee County, Florida, with the Sheriff's Department, where he worked as a school resource officer there for a number of years before coming to New Hampshire, where he worked for the Allentown Police Department, again as a school resource officer, and most recently with the North Hampton Police Department, where he's been for the past six years or so. He's presently, or he was a detective there up until a few days ago, when he decided to join forces with us. He really loved being a school resource officer, and I can remember my first phone conversation with him was, you know, he said to me, I said, "Well, why, why do you wanna, you know, why do you wanna come to Barnstead? You're a detective over there." And he told me that he's been chasing the dream of being a school resource officer ever since he left Florida. So, you know, that right there, that really hit home with me, and we had a bunch of follow-up conversations, him and I, during our interviews. We also met with him, myself, the superintendent, and also Jason Henry, who's on the school board. We interviewed him at length. He's met with the board, he's met with the town administrator, and he really is ready to hit the ground running. So, we're looking forward to having him onboard with us, and, and the school is certainly looking forward to having him as well. So, after tonight, he'll be starting with us tomorrow morning, and we look, we look forward to a long future with, with Chris. Chris, want you to come on up?
All right, to Christopher Robin Papalato, North Hampton, New Hampshire, and Rockingham County. Whereas there is a vacancy for police officer, school resource officer within said town, whereas we, the subscribers, have confidence in your ability and integrity on the duties of said office. We do hereby appoint you and said Christopher Robin Papalato to the position of police officer, SRO of said town. And upon your taking the oath of office and having this appointment and cert- certificate of said oath of office recorded by the town clerk, shall have the powers, form the duties, and be subject to the liabilities of such office until another person shall be chosen and qualified in your stead. Raise your right hand, please. In name, solemnly swear, I will bear faith, allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire, and will support the Constitution thereof. So help me God. I state your name and solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent on me as police officer, incumbent on me as police officer, SRO for the town of Barnstead, according to the best of my abilities, agreeable, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help me God. Welcome aboard.
I also forgot to mention that Chris recently retired, is a 20-year veteran of the Air Force, and he just recently retired, not that long ago, so thank you for your service. Thank you. The, the next officer, I'd like to speak briefly about, he was sworn in a couple of weeks ago, standing over here, in the corner, Kevin O'Toole. Kevin O'Toole's family couldn't be here, but I see that they're in the room tonight, and we glad. Up here, Kevin O'Toole, so for those of you who haven't met him, please say hi to him tonight. He is a recent graduate of the police academy. He came to us from another police department, and we're happy to have him. He's started his field training program, he's already doing quite well. He speaks three different languages, he's Portuguese, Dutch, and English, and so he's gonna be a great asset to the police department. He's already hit the ground running, we know he likes to work, because he's worked details over the past couple of days. So, we're happy to have him, and welcome aboard. This thing I'd like. I, I think most of you. We started talking about, I started talking with my staff last year about doing something for the community. We all know, it's no secret that, you know, law enforcement is looking, people look at law enforcement a lot differently these days. It's a lot different from when I started 30 years ago. And, you know, we've come to realize that you really need to partner with the community. You really need support in your community. And, you know, one thing that we like doing is, you know, we like making people happy, believe it or not. And, you know, we threw around, we threw around a lot of ideas, and I decided that last year, back, back in August of last year, that I was going to rent an ice cream truck and give out some ice cream in the community. And so I did that, and the staff saw the smile, and all my smiles on my staff, all the officers, everybody, everybody that was working the event, the community, believe it or not, people that we arrested were coming up to us, you know, we were giving them ice creams, and, you know, it was just, it was, it was happy. Everybody, everybody that we came in contact with, it was a positive connection. So, you know, after we did that first event, we, we did a second event at the school. And again, it just worked out phenomenally, we gave out, we gave away ice cream. I mean, I didn't want to let that ice cream truck go, so I decided that, you know, with all the support we were getting, all the, all the positivity that we were getting from having this ice cream truck, I decided to try to hunt one down. I was lucky enough to find a old 1975 ice cream truck that had been sitting in the woods for 18 years, believe it or not. It was a rust bucket, but my not knowing anything about, you know, mechanics or auto body, I decided we're gonna take a shot and get this, get the ice cream truck. But, but before I actually made the purchase, I, I'd actually met with a friend of mine, a friend that I had, I've been a real good friend I've known for the past 30 years. His name is Jim McCall, he's sitting over here with the beard in the back, and I showed Jim, Jim's an auto body guy. And, you know, I showed, I showed the picture to Jim, I told him what the vision was of the police department, and Jim just absolutely loved it, those were his words, "After you love it, I want to help you." Short time later, I had to tow truck tow to his house, and I think when he got home from work that night, I don't know what he thought, but I know he thought that. Yeah. So, I mean, Jim and I go back 30 years, what a quick backstory. When I worked in Merrimack, I was checking buildings one night, Jim was managing an office building, and he was there late, I remember it was probably early morning hours, and I was walking around the backside of buildings, taking doors, and Jim was coming out, thinking, you know, the business, and that's kind of how we, we kind of connected, and then, you know, we became friends every single time. So, fast forward, I showed Jim the picture of the truck, and Jim's like, "Let's do this." So, this past summer, Jim and I spent, you know, hundreds, hundreds of hours, every Saturday, from sunup to sundown, and Jim's the type of guy that doesn't want any recognition, but tonight he's gonna get it. So, he, you know, all his materials, all his tools, all his time. He's got, you know, three other employees that, that did work on this truck, you know, Chris, Don, Alex, those guys, I won't say we're here tonight, but, you know, Jim's here, and Jim, I just want to say, you know, thank you. The, the community thanks you. You've made a lot of people in this community very, very happy, myself obviously included, and you've just done a remarkable job, and not asking for, for, for. I just really appreciate it.
I just want to say, looking at the video that we put up, looking at what that Ford decrepit ice cream truck looked like, to what it looks like now, it's just amazing the way that.
Jim, Jim did an awesome job, again, I'd be up, I'd be at his house, you know, every Saturday morning, Sunday morning, with a coffee for him, and then we'd get going, and we'd finish 10, 11 o'clock at night. And it was just, you know, it was fun, and we'd know a lot more about each other. So, I, you know, maybe it won't be our last truck. A plaque with Jim, it says, it'll sit on his desk or his mantle at home, it says, "With our greatest appreciation, Barnstead Police Department presents Jim McCall with this award in recognition for your unwavering commitment, dedication, hard work, and support for our department's ice cream truck program, a community partnership." And it shows a picture of the ice cream truck, and they just.
Oh, that's pretty neat.
Getting, getting the truck from, from where it was, the rust bucket that it was, to making a flat, I guess, a a space where, a blank, blank space, is, we needed to decorate, we needed to do something, bring it to life, put it all together, and for that, for that effort, I called upon another good friend of mine, a neighbor, my next door neighbor, and we've known each other for 30 some odd years, Ben Murray. Ben's sitting back there in a white shirt, Ben owns a company called E-Print, and does such a professional job, in fact, Xerox was down his company today, making commercial for television, so you can probably see his face pretty soon on television. Ben, here's the thing about Ben and his team, Ben's got a great team. I called on Ben on a, on a Friday night, and I said, "Ben, I need this by Tuesday before the selecting meeting, you think you can do it?" And it was a tall order. You know, he got, he got right on it, putting together all the graphics, him and his team, between, you know, Ian and his dad, who, his dad owned a catering business, he cooked it for a very long time, 50 years, right? And his dad let us use his shop at his house, and we were able to bring, bring the truck in there, get, get all the graphics on it. But Ben and his team designed all the graphics that you see on, on the truck, and they did it with, with warp speed, and they did it very professionally. You'll see, everything you see on there had to be measured, it's just not stick of the rock, everything has to be measured precise. And again, something I had never done, but luckily, you know, Ben Murray and his team of, of people were able to put it all together and get it done for us. And, sort of like, the members that came here on Tuesday night, when we were working that weekend, and that Friday night, and that weekend, just designing it and putting it all together. And, and I really appreciate Ben. Ben's not only done that for us, but he's also done advantage, you see, for Veterans Day. Ben's a veteran himself, and he made those veteran banners for us, he's made us business cards. He's also made us free ice cream cone cards, and anything to do with that truck, he's made us free signs that we're gonna be putting in the ground. So, he's put in a lot of work, a lot of his own time, a lot, a lot of his own money, and we just, we're just very, very appreciative for, for Ben, for you and your team, for everything that you've done for us. You and your team made everybody here happy, made kids in this town smile, and we're just very happy for them. So, let's come on up, Ben. So, let's come on up, Ben.
I just got one more, real quick one. Not here, so Ben Ellis, Ben Ellis and Dottie Williams. They are the, really kind of the inspiration into, to really starting this program. Ben Ellis and, and Dottie own the ice cream trucks. When I, when I tried getting an ice cream truck to come to Barnstead, I couldn't get one. And coincidentally, my wife and I were out for a drive one Sunday morning. I knew where there were ice cream trucks and they were behind Ben's office, at his office park is where the, the ice cream trucks are. It just happens to be in the, in the building next door. So we were all driving around, we stopped in and then, and Dottie was sitting outside eating the ice cream. There he is. Hi, Ben, Ben Dottie. All right, hi, hi, great, good timing. So, this is, this is Ben and then Dottie. And I was just explaining, I was just explaining that. I got the ice cream truck from Ben. Ben is, Ben knows, I would say, everything about ice cream trucks. When I was in, when I was looking for one, I, I, I think I drove him crazy. I was stopping by his shop every weekend. The first time I stopped by, I seen his wife outside eating ice cream and I'm like, you must be the ice cream lady. And she was out there with another friend enjoying an ice cream and we got to talking and we really became good friends over this, over this time. So Ben had, he owns six or seven ice cream trucks that he runs. But he also has been doing this for fifty years, so he keeps the old ice cream trucks that are out of service for pots. And I begged the heck out of him to get an ice cream truck. He was, he was very forthcoming, he was gonna give me one. And I, I honestly didn't believe he was gonna get this truck running. But he said with surety that, not a problem, I know exactly what's wrong with it. And he did, I went back there the following week, he got it going, he cleaned the copper, he got it going. He told me it needed a new transmission, we put a new transmission in it. I mean, that guy knows about ice cream trucks and he knows about the business. And those two people standing at the back of room, two other people are very generous. You know, donating ice cream to us, donating pots for the truck. When, when I showed up with the truck, when it was almost complete. I could see, I could see the joy on both of their faces that they seen this ice cream truck come back to life. And I mean, that's been their life, they know the trucks. And Ben quickly hopped on the truck with me. He gave me a, a, a brand new Bellport, a brand new beacon light. And he also gave me a music box. All of these things would cost us a lot of money, but these guys popped right on it, he installed it. Just two great people and I really appreciate everything they've done for the community. And the community appreciates everything that they've done as well. So I want to say thank you, Ben, would you guys mind coming up here real quick?
I'm glad we got them here tonight because they're about to, to jump ship and leave the state. They bought another house in another state and they probably won't be around too much. So it says, with sincere appreciation and gratitude, the Bonset Police Department presents Ben and Dottie Ellis Williams. Uncle Ben's Ice Cream with this award and recognition for their company's commitment and support for the Police Department's Ice Cream Truck Program. Well, me, this guy here, and the guy back there, they're all the bodywork. So anyways, these were all members of my team, I still consider them members of my team and I certainly consider them friends.
All right, it would behoove me if I didn't mention my wife in the back room, sitting down with the pink shirt on. Cause she did, I did miss a lot of Saturdays and Sundays with her this week, this past summer. She, she put up with that, so I, I really appreciate that. But, so that's all I have and I'm gonna invite everybody here that wants to come over to the Police Department. We've got, we've got a bunch of food for people to enjoy and thank you.
Thank God they're not here for the public hearing. Would have been a problem. Okay, get out of my meeting.
Yeah.
Get out. Hey, hey Chief. Chief. Get out of my meeting. Get out of my meeting. All right, can I get a police officer here? Thank you, thank you. They got food over there. Get out.
You're so hospitable.
All right. We have two public hearings tonight. We're gonna open the public hearing at six oh nine. First public hearing is to accept and expand, spend local fiscal recovery funds in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. From the state under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one for, pursuant to RSA thirty-one, hole in ninety-five dash B. Notice for both public hearings appeared in the Baysider. On nine thirty and it was posted at the Senate Post Office, parade post office, Connecticut Town Hall on the inside bulletin board. And also on the outside board. This time, I'll open. Open the hearing up for public input. At six ten. Now, close the public portion of the hearing. At six eleven. Board makes a motion to accept, spend the funds for local fiscal recovery in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Yep. Vote, vote.
Aye.
Aye. Then I'll close the hearing. At six twelve. Read aloud. I had, I had to do it. I'm sorry. The second hearing is to accept and expend a special one-time highway payment. Wouldn't with Senate Bill four oh one, the amount of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty cents for maintenance. Construction, reconstruction, class four and five highways. And acquire equipment necessary to maintain class four and five highways. Get up for public input. Six thirteen. I'll close the public portion of the hearing at. Board makes motion to accept, spend the funds. Vote, vote. All right. Now close the hearing. That's it. Oh, not going to see the fire chief, I would guess. That was a.
With the fire chief, yes. The board could vote to accept the firefighter grant for the new fire truck. As proposed by Sean Rockbady. We have thirty days to accept the grant.
How many days do we have?
We have thirty days.
We have thirty days on this? I'd like to hear. Any discussion? Okay, that's fine. All right, well, we're asking, okay. Yep, I'll take a vote.
Aye.
We only have one department head here. Would you like to come up? Do you have anything to share? Did you break anything this week?
What's going on, George? Oh, you know, same old crap. All right, now that we've got the public hearing out of the way. I would like to be able to take some of that money and reclaim Walker Road and base that road this year. While the asphalt prices are, they're not good, but they're not over the top yet, but they're gonna be. So I think this would be a good time to get it done. Instead of reclaim, doing a shim ovalade and then five years grind it up. Let's do it once for fifteen years. Karen holds that right there, I believe.
The estimated cost is seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
That's everything. Reclaiming and basing, they do all the fine grading and all done.
I saw Walker Road is already on.
That was on for a shim ovalade.
Oh.
About where we got this money, I would just rather reclaim it, be done with it. There is no public to replace on that road. It's all ready to go, been digged safe, just in case we can do it. Yeah, just over eighteen hundred feet.
That's what I expect, parade hill at all?
No, that year we do parade hill hopefully. Yeah, actually.
Aren't we happy to use this one? I mean, is there a time, are we expected for time? It doesn't state that there's a time, and I've spoken with Department of Revenue. And of course, as you know, this money was not to be used for any projects that were in the budget. It's only to be used for something that you had not budgeted for this year. And it can also be used on equipment purchase as well. Or certainly, it could be used next year for some other project. But it absolutely cannot be used to set the tax rate. DRA has stated that, and that's the same thing with the monies we're waiting to receive for bridges. That should be around $155,000. Same thing, that cannot be used to set taxes. For the bridges or for this, the grant? You have the total rec?
$149,475.
$149.
$149,475.
So the difference between
Correct. I think it was around $40,000.
Yeah, something like that.
Just to reclaim.
Somebody really can't hear me. George, do you want some other things that you wanted to spend that money on as well?
I need to, I want to purchase a spreader for the new truck we bought last year.
Yeah.
And that's $26,000.
That's $26,000.
Because the spreader we was using in the last year, we're wasting a lot of salt because the system in this new truck is all electronic. So we were trying to use a, basically an old manual spreader, which you couldn't even really calibrate. So we was either putting out way too much, or you wasn't putting out enough. Most of the time, it was way too much. So I'd like to be able to do that with the policy.
I believe about $50,000. How is this going to affect some of those driveways up there? I know they've had issues.
The what?
Isn't there a couple of driveways on that stretch that have had issues? Run off or something.
They've straightened out, they wanted the beginning that they, they should put new calipers on. And they should be good.
I'd much rather see it done right than shim overlay.
But that's going to also allow another road that we want them to be able to do next year or potentially the year after to have it done by doing the beam line. So it makes sense to me to given that we don't know if the price of asphalt next year is going to go even higher.
Right now, it's gone down 12 to 15. So it's lower than it was when we just did all of that paving.
Of course.
Sure, that's where I...
Yeah.
Vote, and I?
I would like to, yes.
How soon?
They can start probably next Monday. They're in Chigester now, I believe. And soon they're done there, mobilize, make it here, fill it up, grade it, get it ready.
You have an exact number on the spreader?
$26,200.
I have a back and mouth.
Yes.
You want a motion for the, so I'll make a motion that we approve the, yeah, the reclaiming for Walker Road. So of course, that $72,000 change, yeah, paving.
I'll second.
Vote, call.
Aye.
Aye.
Ed? Going for the paving? Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the spreader for, I'm going to say, what, not exceed $28,000? Just in case there's...
Get a second, sec. I'm on my later old chair.
Okay, make it. You need to know.
All right, roll call, vote.
Kathy?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Well.
So that's about it. Business as usual, we're into the fall grading now and ditching.
Oh, it's about that. You like?
Kathy is busy all day long in that office. Well, today I come back and she says, I want you to take this with you. I look at her, I says, wow, you're trying, you look good, aren't you? She's doing an excellent job. She keep track of everything, I think. That's what we've needed for quite some time. There's, every day if a phone call comes in, you're logged. You name it, she's on it.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Are you still mowing, George?
I apologize.
So um, could we it was an event at the station up there last weekend, which was awesome, by the way, great event. But I attempted to get there by Providence Road.
How'd that work out?
It didn't work out that way. Thankfully, I still, I should say, my sister still has the bottom of her car. You think we could put a sign on that road saying that it's where it gets to? Because when we got to store the other way, there's a sign that said, "Road not maintained." But you don't see that on the other side of the road. So could we get a sign up there that says, you can't pass the road?
I thought we already talked about that.
And just when I, if you backed up and turned around to get back out?
Yeah, there was supposed to be last we discussed with him, we had mentioned.
Yeah, it really, because...
The road is not passable.
There are people, other people. Wow.
Well, GPS will take you that route.
Yeah, it certainly did, so.
I can...
That would just be helpful.
What are you going to put up on the sign? Road not maintained? That's not, that doesn't cut it. Not passable. In fact, you know, it's going to be something a little bit more specific because I've seen BMW, they keep there.
How about this? If you're driving, if you're driving a little car, stay the hell out of here. I get to the point. I don't even like to go through there when I'm out here hunting.
I go. I'm riding.
It was tough. But we'll figure one out, put it something. If you'd gone the other way, it was pretty good.
Okay, good work.
She is doing an excellent job.
Some of these things on here. Welcome to the fire, if I'm guided on extinguishers, equipment and everything.
I need to talk to the chief.
Great.
I want to get new extinguishers. Some of them are outdated.
Smoke lamps.
I need somebody in there to kind of straighten those out because they keep doing weird things, going off whenever they feel like it. So...
So you're going to take care of all of that?
I'm going to talk to the chief about that.
And your wifi at the shed?
Yeah, we
We had a expert
Supposed to have wifi, but...
An expert IT guy around, he might take a look at it. Yep. That didn't sound great, confident. Get right to it after, but you'll see.
Now, if we had wifi over there, a lot of times, you know, you want to Google something if you're working on it. Oh, look it up. Without the wifi, it's pretty hard.
So you have a router that's not moving to everything, it's not really...
I guess, I don't know.
So it's going to come up as wireless, but there's no service going to it, which is why...
They already have a router up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
Maybe the routers just...
Played around with it.
See if they can do a router.
You're going to take a look at it? Will you handle it?
It's fucking flaming.
Right, it pretty much is.
Listen, if there's more than one slot...
You would just probably have to do it password.
Says we have one, but there's no more one.
It's, there's a router that's there, but it's not servicing, serviced. There's no service going to it.
Keep pumping, call the guy. He has not called back.
He hasn't called back.
Called someone else.
Oh, he's got the motor. The motor ain't here. I need it back. He's going to take it and take the fan off of it. Put it on a new one.
As long as he has it. Windows down.
Cold enough, I'm thinking, like, yeah. Look at all... Yeah, only one gig left there. There it goes, we're in big trouble. Well. I tried to get a hold of Kathy, but Kathy on it, I'm pretty sure she'll get off.
Well, it's supposed to come on watching mode, so somebody go hang up on there.
Right? Anything else? Ready, solve? Anything else?
I felt like it was 75 last year.
But anyway, it's gone. That's a strange one.
What else? We can't use any of this money, this money that we just got for those kind of things, is that right?
No, it's limited to maintenance, Class 4 or 5 road or equipment to maintain those roads.
I'm not mistaken, we have $28,000.
When did the contract end that we had? Okay.
And the new one, we just got the new paperwork today to make out for pricing.
And had we hit our max in June? Because that's what we should probably look at. If they hadn't delivered everything at that other price, we should have filled up if you could take it. I know you probably... Yes, it was 7103 what was budgeted in this year's budget, so yeah.
Which I figured it would.
And anything was probably going to be going this...
Yes, we have $28,000.
So we'll get that all sent back into Martin's Hall and tell them how much we can take for that amount of money.
Right.
We'll be good.
That should get us through January. Okay, okay.
Providing we don't have one storm after the other for a month.
It's small in New England.
And when a storm, the mix of the sand is almost done, then we're going to have the sand. We're going to be ahead a little bit this year, I think. Let's not take two steps behind someone. We are good. Other than that, that's it.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the meeting for public input.
Aye.
Forget your folder, but not the...
6:30.
30. Three, yeah. Can I, I, because I have a couple of budget committee members here, I just want to mention another round of money that we're going to receive this year. It's under House Bill 1221. The state is going to refund 7.5% of the cost of our retirement, the town's retirement costs for, it would be Group 1 teachers, which certainly is not us, but also police and fire. And that money will be determined and given directly to Department of Revenue to be used strictly to set cap rate. That's like a miracle.
Right?
I know, I'm not sure of the figure yet. We should be getting that big at the beginning of the...
It should be coming soon.
Yep. We thought right after, October 3rd, we'd know. May I can estimate the amount, but...
All right, I'm going to close public input at 6:35. Um, do one, don't...
Yes, you should.
All right.
What, what? Under C.
So I'll make a motion regarding non-public under RSA 91. We're going to roll to C, which is, press now.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
It was an email that, and I printed it out for the board.